And I'll get Willis.
Yeah.
I can get a junior. Alright guys, this is uh, this budget here is gonna look a lot different what the county's seen in the past. Big time because even. The county has, and no offense, uh, budgets are for, it's inclusive. It includes all expenses of counties from one million dollar, Elton Grant to grants, we get to the courthouse. All this is included in here, so when you look at this, it's gonna kinda exciting, but we're not far off from what the county already spent. So, when you take all the departments, including sheriff and courthouse, the road department, and you're including uh, TIA, and squash on that, so I think Willis has done a good job kinda simplifying it, not getting it lost with the numbers. He separated the numbers enough for us folks to kinda digest and understand where we add. But he's also here to help answer any questions regarding this budget. And for the record, the budget that we are set for, where the county's currently all of it is actually based off general funds. So, we already have exceeded that, but this here will be a more, more uh, true budget that you want.
Alright, so what this FY25 is actual numbers or what was the budget?
That's what, that's what we budgeted last year.
That's what was the budget?
That's what we budgeted for FY25, FY26 is what we budgeted for the name.
Okay, now, I know you gave it to us the other night, what is, what are we closing in on actual for this fiscal year?
I, we're probably, but we're over budget by, I think we're at seven point seven right there.
Okay.
And we're budgeting seven point five.
Okay.
At seven point seven or we seven point seven oh?
We're at seven point seven.
Okay.
But on revenue side, we're at like six point two.
It was a good way.
We're, we're a good bit less than what we budgeted.
So what was the, y'all have any idea the reason for that?
It appeared to be licenses and permits and the intergovernmental, that's four hundred thousand and three hundred twenty-five thousand. I have not seen nothing near that, that was put to that.
And we don't squash with them for yet.
Five.
And they didn't have a follow up.
Yeah, that's right, five's the fourth, which is about three hundred thousand.
No.
Or under government, okay, under governmental is three twenty-five.
Yeah. I haven't, I haven't seen any intergovernmental stuff that is anywhere close to that number.
So I noticed for this next fiscal year, you don't have any intergovernmental, because, yeah. That's right. What was that? What was it supposed to be? You don't know?
Well, sometimes what happens, and you know, depending on who does the budget, you can use that for, kinda like using QuickBooks, you see this line item and you say, well, I'm gonna put this over here in this line item and it, you're the only one that knows, and what Willis has done, he's actually appropriately designated these things so they're in the lineup where they need to be at. Uh, so, so this figure up here to the right, twelve million, that's, that's, that's our budget and then that's all the, that's all the.
Other, other ones.
That's all the funds that you get.
Okay. That means, that's what we're expecting to get.
Yes.
That's what we expected to spend, and I think it's good for the citizen, so they get misled thinking that you only spend seventy dollars for this county, it's really costing more.
Now, I don't know how, I mean, it's only the county I've ever, this is the only county I've ever seen, so I don't know how other people do it, but are you supposed to budget for T, like the local taxes, we have some, you know what I mean, like, that's within our domain.
Yes.
Licenses, permits within our domain, TIA, not within our domain, I mean like.
It kinda helps offices to control.
Well, I understand what it does, but I don't, we have.
We can expect that there, we can kinda average out the numbers.
Okay.
And that's what I did, done here.
Okay.
Is average it out, so it could be more than seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, it could be as good, a little less, it could be a little less, a little more.
It's just an average.
It's, that's an average, 'cause you can't, I can't give you a hundred percent exact of where it's gonna be, 'cause that's a possible business.
But sometimes we may not use those grants so that, where we may charge go down because we didn't use the grant or.
Yeah.
But I do appreciate you going ahead and saying how we would, how we would use those funds, so like, I'm just picking on TIA, staying there. But you know, if we got seven thirty-two in revenue, then you spend it these ways on the, how these streets and capital.
I'm kinda new to all this, so I, oh no.
Wait, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, you got to go a little farther. Alright, so in twenty-five, now even, when I say the bottom, it's on this segment, she's at the top, uh, it's capital outlay.
Yes.
Five hundred fifty thousand, but then it's, then it's nothing next year, is that something that's?
Well, so if you look right inside that, I have it, it's spread out, all the capital outlays that were by the general fund, it's already designated to sheriff department, to whoever.
Okay, okay.
To the, kinda, if you look on like the actual budget, on capital outlays, like the TIA and SWAT, those are capital outlay funds pretty much, so you're supposed to improve with your county with the funds. So, those are, those are gonna be only in capital outlays, 'cause that's what they're used for.
Intergovernmental fees, that, that concerns me.
Sir?
The intergovernmental fees, we had three hundred thousand dollars in last year, and they're putting that this year?
I don't know what they were calling intergovernmental fees.
That's my question. That's what I'm looking to uncover. What is intergovernmental fee?
We, we get reimbursed for payroll from the chamber, it's seventy-two thousand dollars, that's not technical revenue.
That's right.
That's a reimbursement.
Right.
So all I, all I did for that is you go down to like, it's in government building, I reduced that down by seventy-two thousand dollars. So technically, it's actually two hundred and thirty-some thousand if you add that money back.
It's intergovernmental fees.
Yeah, but it's not, that's not true intergovernmental.
That's what he's trying to say, he's re, he's putting another category.
Yeah, I reduced our expenditures off of that, not put it into revenue and increased our expenditures. So.
What you got?
I guess my question is, and language is terrible, what are intergovernmental fees?
Definition. Is that right? I can't understand it.
Yeah.
Well, y'all did the budget last year, so how did y'all, what did y'all designate intergovernmental fees? I mean, I would think y'all would know that, and I'm not peeing.
I wouldn't say that I didn't, I, I probably can't think of it right now.
I think what it may raise the question, Suzanne, is it's sent here and it's not there no more, and they've been used to seeing it, missing on the previous budgets. So it's not there, so they said, where's the act?
Do y'all have a copy on your emails from last year? Would it have been sent to you guys so that you could compare? I mean.
It might be, ma'am, I'm, I'm, it might be, I can't say it is, and I can't say it ain't, I gotta go back and search and see. The possibility it is.
Oh, but intergovernmental fees is you, it would be like the city paying us back for something, or another county paying us back.
Okay.
For, if we done a service or something like that, it wouldn't be us getting reimbursed for payroll.
Okay.
Or us getting reimbursed for the reg department from the city. The, the city reimburses us twenty thousand dollars a year for reg, that, that's not revenue, that's just.
Right.
It just reduces our expenses.
And we noticed too, the revenue on the last year's budget was really not technically, should be classified revenue. It was things that should have been counted other than revenue, and it was misleading. I wanna say they had revenue doubled in the budget last year, is that correct, was it?
They were counting their reimbursements back, they, they weren't taking them away from expenditures, they were just leaving them and reimbursed it. Leaving them in that revenue, so it kinda influenced us, but it makes it look like we're spending more money than we actually are for receiving more money.
And if you look on the second page, Willis did an extra job at outlining some explanations to that budget. And I thought he did a real good job, invested some time into that. You just tried to read it on one page, Willis.
Oh, the balance sheet, so that, you also.
What was that, that other finance, that five hundred eighty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it, I have not.
So last, so can you go back in the books, can you go back to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four?
I mean, that's what we're getting all of it on right now, but, like I said, I've looked and well, that, if we received money for that, like, if we received money from twenty-four and twenty-five, it should have been receivable back into twenty-four, it shouldn't.
Yeah.
It shouldn't affect twenty-five, but.
Alright, so help, help me understand the commissioner's office account. Cause it's a substantial increase.
Yeah, well, two hundred and ten thousand of that is the property and vehicle liability insurance that didn't appear to be, it didn't appear to be budgeted last year, because that four hundred eighty-four thousand barely covered payroll for commissioning office.
Okay.
Um, and then thirty-seven thousand is the new software we're planning on getting, the admin software. So that would be that, sixty thousand in auditor fees. Twenty thousand is a current fee, but it probably won't be more than twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So, you said that two hundred and ten thousand property and vehicle liability insurance, but now wouldn't the insurance be?
Distributed among the, and we talked about.
And I think that's the other finance, and I remember for years that other finance and sources has been like, sort of a bad old, a gobby ground, if you will, so they'd put it there, so health insurance, property insurance, and so they'd put it there and then it'd be, they'd do general entries later to assign it back to the sheriff's office or the MAS or whomever, you know, was, that was their share, that was their share.
Yes.
But it all kind of played.
I will say, we didn't see, and, and, and I'll tell you, Willis never did, we could never see where the insurance was budgeted. It's several things dropped out, it's never included in the main budget last year. So we did discuss distributing out fairly equally to the other departments of this insurance, 'cause it was two hundred thousand, I mean, I said.
Not, just to kinda, I don't know, I think it's like equitable, fair thing to do.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Separate out and go, y'all, this is yours, this is yours, 'cause otherwise, what's gonna happen is, to someone not familiar with the the details, they're gonna go, my God, you have doubled your budget.
That's correct.
Wow. You know, yeah, y'all doubled, doubled the budget.
It was something else we was looking at, uh, uh, distributed, what we were looking at, not just the insurance, or something else.
I distributed the software a little bit.
Yeah, that's right, that's the.
I gave part of it to the tax, or not taxpayers, oh, taxpayers and planning and all of it, gave part of it to Misty Water, which is the, it's in the other. Heard of it, yeah, it's in the other.
And now Misty Water is a, um.
It's a separate pain.
Totally separate, yeah, I'm just gonna, saying it says, um. Enterprise fund.
Enterprise.
Yeah.
Plus we have a big savings on healthcare insurance, big time.
Yeah, that's.
That was a blessing, I very often.
It was. So are all, everybody, I mean, if you went to these offices, they know what's coming and they know about the changes and.
Everybody has been sent their departments, but.
And they begin with twice.
Okay.
And, you know, the, the way we did, Willis started out meeting with the individual department heads, but in the beginning, he gathered, he had conversations to, and we got hard copies of their proposal that they wanted in their budget. So Willis gave those copies to me, we sat down and looked at it, and then Willis was building these budgets by department. We would call him in, sit down with him, me and Willis would have it on my computer, we'd go down and look at it. So they all understood the budgets, and if we get this admins program, they all have opportunity to see their live budgets. Anytime they go to, they can see what they're having in their budgets.
And we should, it'll, it'll be cloud-based, so we could give all each y'all a lot of money, y'all could look at it.
Yeah, y'all would have, and here's the neat thing, y'all may not know this, but it's gonna save us money on the backend, because that little slurper that we got from Walmart is on its last leg. And, and Willis and, and Patricia have prayer sessions at her computer every day. I mean, I think Willis had to work his magic last week and do something here, Patricia's back there, but there, we have really got all we will get out of that server. And it's gonna be very expensive to replace it.
Oh, I know, I remember when we got that.
So we think cloud-based will save the county, we pay for the software, but we'll save on the, uh. And it's mobile too, Chris. I know it's not, I know it's not a bottom money, but on the, on the drug task force. On the, on the thirty-five thousand, now I thought, I thought, and I wasn't on this, so I don't really know, but I, I thought just street knowledge wise, I thought twenty-four, twenty-five, we did have two, two or three members on the task force. And, and, and I, I guess what I'm asking is, I guess the increase is because they've added an extra person or two on the task force, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's what, I went off of what the payroll was and what they spent.
Then they, uh, at one time, did they, when did this stop here, didn't it just kinda like took a little break with the drug task force and went dormant for a little bit last year? And it got kicked off?
Everybody was pulling up.
Well, the good news is, Barry County may join us. There's, and if they do, they're gonna lower our costs, so there's, okay, but I was just curious, you know, how the county already spent thirty-five thousand when.
We've been a lot more than that.
Well, I, we had to, yes.
We had to. Had a little break, man, what we spent, sixty-eight thousand?
True.
As of July third.
That's a good task. And I mean, we gotta have it, but, I mean, but.
You're doing just a job, dog.
Oh, yeah, 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 I mean, I've had, I was just, I was just curious at the increase.
And we get state funded, if you look at the last line on the combined special revenue, there's a hundred and two thousand that we get from the state, the CJCC.
Yeah.
They give us a, like, like right at eight, eight-five hundred dollars a month, somewhere around that.
Alright, so you got all the ups and downs, and the ups mostly on all the expenses. What's the likelihood of revenue really increasing one point nine billion dollars? Y'all need help?
That's the, that's the question really with all this, is we don't know what the property values are yet, we don't know what the asset values are. Because EMS is not finished their free valve, we may be having to figure something out.
We've been, but, but I will say, we should have got a picture by the end of August, I talked to, talked to Silas, Silas. Uh, he called me back yesterday and we talked, and he says, first part should be first of August, it should be finished by the end of August.
I mean, this whole thing hinges on increased revenue.
Yes.
Which.
Which we haven't truly added, 'cause there's potential of the prison really increasing their revenue. We didn't really take advantage of that, 'cause we, we've been advised that they're to expect additional, two hundred ISM nights. And they're saying that that brings in a lot of money for sheriff department, about two hundred and fifty. And so we're looking at that, and you know this, we've been, the county, one thing, and one thing is, you know, the county's had this all-in money sitting here, and that's one thing that saved the county. And then they would dip into this over the years and have their budget where that, I know there's an article. What was it, November, was it October when the county got seven hundred and, took seven hundred thousand in all-in funds, put in the general account?
I believe.
Yep, so, you know, they had that, and they were worried about two million dollar, you know, time.
So you also count on another four hundred thousand in other services.
Yeah, that is.
Right, I mean, that's.
That's the prison detention center.
Does EMS and sheriff, they, they regularly bring in that much revenue?
I'm gonna tell you something, Chris.
That three hundred and fifty thousand, that's how much we transferred right now with EMS.
And that's, and that's something else we're doing, we're letting each department fund their sale, so EMS program team has been sitting there, and now we're utilizing, they got, it's their money, they pay for the expenses. And, uh, one thing I'm, I am impressed, look at the numbers of what the EMS brings into this county, it's very impressive. Very impressive, they're on their own.
They're running at like one hundred thousand a year, and they have some fifty thousand dollar months.
Now, I, I know we're in our budget meeting, but I guess this is part of financing. Where, where are we at on the discussion about animal control or, or animal shelter?
That's something that's never been brought up, we've been trying, I get the noise on it, so.
Well, I, what I'm saying, I remember we discussed it at, at the, the meeting we was at at the sheriff's office, you know, and the sheriff said they was, you know, trying to get something on the coffee counter, and I know this is a budget meeting, but that's, that's finance, because if I'm not mistaken, there used to be a line item on the budget years ago for, you know, animal shelter or. What, what happened to, y'all seem to be of interest, one thing, you need to get a humane society, and, and how through that, you don't subsidize the funding on the humane society. It's properly funded plus the government funded, so TIFT can fund theirs, 'cause they got a bigger budget. For this county, we can't do it less, someone takes the initiative and really wants to jump in here and let's create a, a humane society and to like, like, you know, like other departments, we're doing subsidizing. And there may be, and there may be some, look, maybe something, I can get Bonnie on, and said, Bonnie, see if there's grants that pay for it yet. 'Cause we found out, there's a grant, it's called Safe, was it Safer, Safer Grant? And it, I, I, I'm intrigued with it, because it actually will pay four full-time firefighters for three years, but it, it tears off, they'll pay a hundred percent the first year, and it drops down for about three or four years, and it gets you where you can. And, and the reason I'm asking, 'cause I'm not sure if any of you other commissioners are getting, are getting phone calls periodically about strays. I get them all the time, and they ask me, what am I supposed, you know, what we're supposed to do with them, and then everybody's like, well, we're just gonna bring them to your house. Well, I think that's what everybody does in my neighborhood, 'cause I have a big vet bill, and I take, I, there's no telling how many animals I brought back from.
They'll leave my broker.
They're gonna leave my broker. I don't wanna know what, you talk too many cattle out there. My wife, she feeds anything that walks around, don't let any cattle out. But I mean, but I mean, especially out of the count of these dirt roads, people will dump them out, you know, and I mean. I put that on the list, Paul, I still want to, we can figure out on that, and I didn't mean to, I mean, I didn't have a, a part of budgeting ideas, but. This is solid waste collection, this agriculture.
And this is, this, do I not, so this is prorated as if it was eight thirty-one? Wouldn't you say fiscal year twenty-five, that's not, today, that's as if it was eight thirty-one?
At this, at this way, year twenty-five, that is what they budgeted, that is the number they, they done.
That's what they budgeted, but what, well, hey, I guess my question is, sorry, so you're, this, to say solid waste, the three forty-two would be what you're at year-to-date, plus to get you to the end of the year. Right? I mean, it says out there the note, as of July third, expenses are, in two months, payroll and other monthly expenses left, so you're kinda.
Now, that, that is, that is as of July third, and we got two more months.
That's right. That's how you came up with.
That's what it's at right now, but it's gonna be more.
And that's how you came up with the three forty-two number.
Uh, no, I come up with that through, I added my monthly expenses on the roll-offs, dumpster, all that, added ten times by twelve, and then payroll. With the, with all the med care.
Yeah.
Add that all together, and that's, that was the number that came out on the, on the side.
You want, when you go to curve, that goes down great. It will go down well and uh I talked to Richard Gove today and by the time we have our next workshop meeting, you have us a, 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 a grant on the call. For a county.
And all these numbers should go down.
I saw a lot of them, they.
And all the numbers should go down as we change insurances. So it decreased by like twenty thousand dollars a month, but I don't have the true numbers yet to plug it into payroll side. So this, that, all these numbers are with the current insurance with was going from fifty thousand to thirty thousand. So it's going to drop a lot. So. That is a positive of all this. That all these numbers will go down a little bit. Like I said, I don't have the numbers yet.
You know, I'd rather go down than up.
What is in our governmental welfare? I think that's defects.
That's defects, yeah.
Okay.
Does the government buildings, I don't know, I can tell by that number doesn't include. A new project to uh, infrastructure project or regroup the project.
Oh, we, that, that should be in there for that core out route.
Yeah, it's in grants, grants.
Okay.
And combined with revenue is, is in capital outlays.
Yeah, that's what you do.
Okay, you got it.
If we receive a grant for it, I don't put it in the actual general fund, but.
It's, it's on the mind.
Yep. Because it's not technical. It's not our mandate.
That's right. So when will she first be coming?
G-MAS. Well, I, I tell you, it seem like it's a habit because even the way I went and talked to uh, to tax office. Uh, they, they said usually they have the, uh, I guess they request extensions. Because in, in I understand, you know, a tax session might run behind, but uh they're gonna have to go to work once G-MAS gives them that amount and uh.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So we gotta vote on the, what's always.
You know what I'm facing, you know what I struggle with? How can you vote on a budget when you don't have.
Always have.
And, and I'm just wondering why don't they, and then you got audits. Why is the audit like it is? You know, look like you have the audit starting January first and you get through the screen because you have all your budgets and all.
That's why we do ours with the utilities.
But they do it different because we don't have an audit by none by the end of the year. At least until February that we risk being, you know, out of compliance and it looks are funny.
I just kinda never budgeting on money, I ain't got any money.
What's that?
That I know ain't gonna be, you know, that I might be, I get everything.
Well, you know, that's the thing I had to get used to is from a, a corporate budget on the private sector to a county budget. I had to make, I mean, I might throw Willis nuts. I stayed in the office about that.
Chris, it's, well, it's, it's a lot less, but it's a lot more of a, it's more complicated with the fun, you know what I'm saying, versus just, versus a utility budget.
Well, and two, it's, it's letting, it's communicating to the citizens foremost that what it really, really takes to run this county. Because a lot of times they get misled, they only see seventy dollars. Oh, man, I mean, okay. But when they see the bigger picture, they say, wow. That's a lot of money to run this county. And that's what it's all about is, is. But the good news is a lot of that, those grants and opportunities are figured into that. Uh, could go away if we don't do any of that. Uh, the LP might not be here as much as it normally is, so that would bring that down some.
Where is, is the hurricane alien and the, the FEMA reimbursement? Where is all that?
I have been, the last part of the day has been responding to Alice, Warnock, and Off-Hoff. Uh, a lot of times when FEMA communicates to them, it's really foreign language about this, this information or invoice uh or a contract outside. So uh, I've gotten Brad and Cece on the email and what I want to do, I got an email back to them. Uh, later this afternoon, I wanna know about, I understood, I'm newly elected, newly elected, there's supposed to be a fifty percent. Uh, they were gonna, FEMA was gonna give fifty percent of the actual assessment, their assessment, I guess, when they come down. And that's one of the things I was bringing up. I hadn't got an action back, they're working on it, but I said, I, I understood that the counties were gonna get fifty percent. And that's what I wondered, my words by that. Um, so anyway.
Well, I just, I was just wondering, you know, with the amount that each department has already spent, how much of that was overtime and cleanup?
It could have been true.
How, how did that affect their individual department budgets and, and, you know, on the broader picture?
It could have, especially with the road department, I'm sure them guys worked a lot of long hours. Uh, but uh, I don't know how that, 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 that information was captured and given to FEMA was, you know. I can see why it would have been best interest of the county at the time to hire a consultant to manage all that because it's so much out there. Uh, I can't, I, I'm doing good to understand and digest what they're, do the disciplines communicating about. Cause they use all these terms, abbreviations, uh, scope of projects abbreviated. You try to figure that out. And some of the projects haven't had a scope of, uh, uh, I guess scope of projects identified, so I'm trying, I'm, I'm, I didn't like that to the contractors.
Well, is that, is that bill, is it still hanging out there?
Oh, yeah.
But you've been communicating with her.
Yeah, I, I had them on the email. Soon as I got the response back from the senators and congressmen, I sent it to all of them and said, hey, here's what they're telling me.
Okay.
We need to get on the same page. But no, I'm, I'm trying to get everybody, you know, and I talked to Cory with Off-Hoff. And I said, you know, y'all got to have a lot of this. If everybody's busting in, got paid, somebody gonna. I just, you know, we wrote the check, they're gonna, it's almost like when you write the check, you're done, you know, they're gonna forget about you. So, but we keep pushing and leveraging.
So we haven't got, we haven't, we haven't got anybody to.
No, sir. And Lightning Brandon had, uh, he's got a, I, I think he told me, he gave me a rough estimate and I might have been wrong. He sits him around a million dollars for the county itself. And he did respond back to them. I just haven't, haven't looked at it for the, what he was saying.
Chairman, do you have anything in the budget to, to, to redo some of the fire department stations that?
Well, one thing I would like to do, you know, if we were to go cur side and save, take some of that money that we were saving on cur side and allocate to the volunteer fire department and enhance it.
Well, because of the insurance premium tax.
Yes, that's, exactly.
Use it in other incorporated parts.
And plus we need it and lower our fire insurance in our neighborhoods.
Needs more stations.
Well, that's, that's the key.
And then fix the ones that you.
Yeah, my one.
Second place, everybody. Yeah, you got several class Ts.
Well, we wanna work on that, give them, you know, cause Brandon, wasn't Brandon in the fire chief talking about the lack of fire protection for volunteers? That's something we can do and I, I really want Bonnie to focus on that grant.
I, I, I saw a rating right now of a nine, which is high.
Hey, no, here for me, I mean, I see you got the insurance premium tax listed in there, but how it's supposed to be used and all that.
Best one. I don't understand that.
I totally agree.
But it needs to be a one.
I mean, if you live in.
You live near to Farah High, people.
If you live near to a fire station in Atlanta, you're not about one or two.
Yeah.
Uh, in this area, in this area, usually in good school is a five.
What we need more, that'll be our goal.
If you're five miles or more from driving distance from a fire station.
Yeah.
Ten automatically.
That's why we need one out there pretty well covered being. That's what I would like to allocate. Take the.
Yeah, but it's not just, it's not just build it though and say, there you go. It is.
No, we want.
Total, you gotta have the service.
That's correct. We don't wanna build it and get volunteers, uh, give it, get the proper gear and equipment. Hopefully they know we, we care, they're gonna.
But we did a lot of work. When I first came in, y'all had built several new stations and then when I, what, three or four years ago, I did a lot of work to get trucks and all that.
Yeah, we got several agents saying that and that, but they need equipment on.
I think Bonnie's working on a grant for five hundred for one of the others, which are very expensive.
So again, there's a lot hinging on increased revenue.
But although it's increasing, although the other, the other expenditures you look at for is with the grants, some of them may kind of not even go through and change that number big time. You know, that number, that, that bottom number could fluctuate down and that's the unknown too is uh. And even my brother, we get into some good grants, but that really, he, you know, he been swamped.
I mean, some grants they can get good lower recommended on the other things.
I did speak to somebody the other day about cur side garbage pickup and when they found out how reasonable the rate was, the resistance just immediately dropped. Because I mean, we have it and it's twenty-two dollars a month and it, it's just.
That's not bad.
That is not a bad rate and it's, it's worth it to not have to go deal with driving in and out away from the roll ups and, and I mean.
I tell you what I was surprised with, my mother-in-law was only at Playa Llama and I get thinking about this, but they're on, they're widowers, both of them are widowers, so. They split a trash can, split the cost. And I thought that was pretty cool. So that's how creative you have to do if you don't wanna get your neighbor, let's, let's share this trash can. And uh, sables and gas.
Absolutely.
Well, like, you know, I'm without, you know, that I, I would, you know, in the future when we get, like I said, the numbers or whatever, I, I'd like to know what other counties are doing to help. You know, and that's a good idea right there, but you know, everybody, if somebody's on social security or disability, they might not have a neighbor that can split it with them.
Well, Richard, Richard did tell me, and he services Ben Hill, he serves City O-Silla. I asked him, through his tribals of these counties and was he aware of anybody having a special program to offer help, assistance on trash and all that. Now, I like to give a hand over in Ben Hill County and see, hey, well, they go into this. Uh, I think their plans is strategies a little bit, they're gonna do a twelve-month plan where they would ease phase out. They go there for one convenient site in, in, in twelve months. They're gonna reevaluate what would shut it down.
Because twenty-two dollars might not be much.
Exactly.
To you.
But to somebody else.
Somebody that's, you know, that's alone, you know, lives by herself and, you know, gets what, nine hundred, I'm just guessing, just perhaps, let's just say nine hundred a month. Twenty-two dollars, an extra twenty-two dollars is big, big deal. So.
It's cer- certainly something we could. Now, Chalk County down there, a place down there, you pay your taxes, you got traded, you don't have a sale. You, you pay your taxes, you got trash picked up for you. It's adding in with your taxes.
Yeah, kids do that.
I don't.
It's kind of scary because you know what happened to your.
And I'm not down.
Cause I got for.
I'm not down that much, so.
Is that why you banned that?
Yeah. Well, what happens is like the federal government, you take this one entity, you add to it and it's like, you know, you've got a lot of things added.
Yeah.
It's going up.
Sorry about that. My night to feed the kids at bottom class and they got water mixed up.
Cheese, cheese strip.
So I see, alright, so. Emergency management. Is actually decreasing. I know with the storm, I guess, this, I see you know here, the expenses. Are very high, but being reversed.
Hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Yeah. And then on the. Nine one one, where are we with that grant and all that to get, that's a major.
Ah, yes, well, I, I'd be glad, I'd be glad. So Bonnie's gonna work on that. We, we know that, we've been, we've made with Brandon. The, the thing is, we've gotten Stephen, we got two choices. Either fix what we got or take it out and get a new system so we can get the money. And kind of Monday morning, we're gonna go a hundred percent on that and figure it out. We're gonna make a decision on that.
Cause there was a window to get it done, right? But it seemed like it was on its last leg.
Well, it's close to it. We, 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 we looked at it about a couple of months ago, me and Bonnie and Brandon got together, but it just, what the problem, and that goes back to why, why we need a grant rider. Involved with this stuff because someone got involved with that and then, and then didn't get done right. And uh, the problem is the system works. The first part of the system is working, but what the intent was, they clicked the map. The mapping program, so all the emergency vehicles, police department, sheriff department would have a, a quick access to a map. Like, like your GPS on your car, it tells them where to go. So that's what's not working. So that's, the problem is, okay, if it's not working with that, we need to take it out. And I think to the previous chairman's uh point, that's the reason they never got paid is because it didn't work. I understood that's why they didn't ever pay for this because it wasn't a hundred percent ready. So the sheriff department says they like what they got. The only problem is the mapping doesn't work. And I'm, I'm trying to use the term, what they call that mapping, but um.
CAD?
CAD. Thank you, listen.
Alright, so this is balanced. We're about to, we brought up the TAM, that and that. Which means our expenses have outpaced our revenue. How are we gonna?
Well, that's the thing we try to budget here because really the county's been out, but uh, off, uh, out about, uh, uh.
They've under budgeted.
Yep, they, they, they've been so under budgeted, y'all just didn't see it because you had this ARPA money and you've been dipping in it. And so last year y'all dipped in it, you know, I say y'all, the county dipped in it, seven hundred thousand, but I understand that. It was about a point of hurricane, right? And so that was used there, but we don't know how many times, probably a couple of times last year, but you had that as a safeguard and I don't know what the total was on that. Did y'all, was it two million, three million? That was.
Our bonus one point eight.
One point eight, but.
From twenty-one till, right now we got like a hundred thousand dollars left of it.
Okay.
And so.
Maybe one point seven over, over the last.
But one thing to the point, I think we all can agree, it's been since two thousand seven since we've had proper rebalance. So we're gonna see an increase. I, I mean, it's, 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 everything's increased, but with that increase with the prison, subject to additional two hundred ICE inmates, to other opportunities, we feel like we're gonna get there. Uh, the only thing, we have opportunities even with this bottom part of the number that you look at on this budget. All that is continued to certain grant opportunities that we're hoping we're gonna get. So that bottom may change and I like to still hope to, we don't know till you don't know. And that's what's so tough about doing these budgets. And it needs to be done by law, but then we wait, a holdup is these assessments. Once we get those assessments, we're gonna have a better picture. And, but I will say this, the county's done all they could with, with what's come in, tax digest based on two thousand seven. And that's why the county's got so many band-aids. That's why we got equipment out there that is sitting there. We just put, we just put band-aids and, and I understand, we don't, we got what we got. But that's why I think it was the best investment, I appreciate y'all voting on it, is getting Bonnie in here because hopefully she will offset this with getting us grants. And that's what we're counting. I mean, we don't wanna put all the eggs in the basket, but we're gonna do a lot of things to try to, uh, and I, don't answer, I know this does not answer your question about revenue, but we, we, taxes is gonna go up.
Without, without it.
That, that, it still worries me. We get rid of that loan. And that, that loan gotta be paid off at least seven thirty one.
Correct.
Which means if taxes don't equal up to what we're saying, that means we furthering the whole. And mama used to say, you can't borrow, you have to dip.
Nope.
So it, it's got me nervous, you know, about what we're gonna do. I hate to start off again and but according to this, we been starting off.
Well.
Well, we had a reserve that then we drew from.
That's correct.
And supplemented the revenue, which, that was a one-time thing or.
But I will say, I like that, you start, you gotta start dipping into your savings and I don't, I'm not, I'm not calling that a savings. You gotta start dipping over here to pay over there.
The, the, the plans are, uh, we do, do, do project the, the tax revenue to increase. What that's gonna look like, we don't know. But I will say this, when I, when I took office on January seventh, we were spinning like a fish. When I say spinning like a fish, there's no. When I say spinning like a fish, there's no accountability. And then Willis comes in, we start, and that's why it's so important about these credit card policies. We get the policies where we're holding these departments accountable, they just don't go out here and get something. You know, we, I do POs every day, but that has slowed down tremendously. Uh, I did it exactly the road department. You tell them you done tore up a five thousand dollar hydraulic pump, you know what I do? Tell me why and who done it, explain, I have a program where we're gonna get accident reports, and I want the name. You got three Peter, we may have a problem, we got four, first to tear it up three times. But we need to know that, cause that road department does go through a lot of money, and you sit here with five thousand dollar hydraulic pump. A, a blade, it had to be rewelded. You, we just need to, to hold things accountable, I think we've done a better job at getting a hold of our finances, and holding each department accountable. Willis has done a good job of getting, consolidating everything to one account, one Amazon account, it is the county. And whereas, everybody else has it on Amazon account. And every department, so it's hard to keep a hold of them, and I think we, through efficiency of managing those departments and each expenditures. Certainly, you know, we don't get, and it's nothing to be embarrassed, we, we base this off of what's actually gonna take. To maintain this county, there's, you know, and that does, Chris, I'll tell you, that does include about three percent raise. For employees, it's fair enough, and they didn't get one last year, so, I think, I think we're gonna be, me and Willis has had. Several conversations, and we looked at this, we've looked at the numbers, I don't know how many times, Willis has looked at the, changed the budgets. I got with Silas, I don't like how we have to do a budget and wait. Till September first or middle of September to get the real number, but there's nothing wrong, if the number don't come back right. There's nothing wrong, I'd rather amend it, we just have to make a, amend the, uh, budget, that's, that's the way.
Yeah.
And I get it, and I get you too, um, let me ask this question, how comfortable are you and Willis with this budget? I'm kind, I'm good.
I mean, that's, I went a mile and a mile and, you know, through every department, through every county. And that is, that is what we spend, I mean.
Yeah.
We're not far from what the county actually spends, we're not far from what y'all actually spend, so we didn't go.
We didn't, they really had nothing great outside of, you know.
So, so here's, here's my concern, everybody had, had to answer for this. So, we should see an increase in property taxes, did we grow the digest?
It did, the reevaluations does. Saving value should be higher.
Okay, so, are we gonna advertise the?
Well, say you don't know that, well, I get where you're going, Chris, and I've had that conversation.
Did evaluations go up?
You rolled the village rate.
Uh-huh, or you advertised an increase?
Well, what, here's what hurt, back in twenty seventeen. So, didn't have any property re- rebounds, since two thousand, so keep this in mind, so the county rolled back the village rate, that's unheard of. Why would you roll back the village rate when you never had tax assessment? You rolled it back in twenty seventeen, that.
Not in seven, seven?
Seven.
On seven?
Two thousand seven.
You rolled that out of it?
Two thousand seven. Not seventeen, we ain't done this in a while.
That was the last rebound.
That's rebound, but y'all, y'all did a rollback on the village rate in twenty seventeen.
Okay.
And that's what, and that's the difference, so, when you haven't had a tax reassessment. Since two thousand seventy, ten years later, you do a, 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 a village roll, a rollback the village rate. How can you do that when everything is, you got to pay for these services? And that's what put us where we at now, but, I'm talking to Silas, cause I'm trying to understand this, that I'm new. And I understand, if you don't roll the village rate and show an increase, then you got to post it publicly, I, I, my goal is. To see what we got and, and live within our means, we got, we rolled back the village rate accordingly, and here's something else I want to know, this is the long-range plan. Is working the board of education, going into next year, and, and, and building our own county home state tax assessment, and we can do that. And use Lowns County as a model for that, that's another goal.
Speaking of Lowns County, I. Go down there, you know, a couple of times and, and shop, and I happened to notice my receipt, you know what the tax rates in Lowns County are?
They got a lot of them.
They do, uh, their first tax is eight percent, their second tax is four percent, so it's twelve cents on the dollar. That you're paying taxes down there, is there a possibility that we could float for a specified amount of time? You know, a special, uh, or just an additional penny sales tax to get us over this hump? I mean, because when you're talking about raising property taxes, that goes back to the landowners and, and. They shoulder ninety-seven percent of the burden, but if you get a penny sales tax, then I think that would be across the board, it would be more fair.
That's not a fair tax, it is a sales tax.
Yeah.
So, is, is that something that, that y'all might consider?
The unfortunate thing is, uh, the local option sales tax, or special purpose local option sales tax, can only be used for certain.
Correct.
Capital.
Right, but when you're talking about a fire department to get the ISO rating now.
Well, I don't think they have anything for that, but, here's the thing, so, Tifton and Belloster have opportunities for tourism sales tax. So, they have all these others that add up, so I get you, I mean, and like Chris said. Chris, we're restricted as a county just to put a tax, any, add any sales tax without the state approval.
Well, it's worth exploring.
And, yeah, I, I kinda piggyback on that, and, and this might be, I know I mentioned it to you one time. And it might be something, it might be out of Willis's wheelhouse, but it might be something he can check into, is, you know. How much, how much sales taxes do we miss out on, and I'll give you an example. Almost everybody that lives on Crystal Lake Road, when you get past the curb down there, they, they live in Irwin County, but they have a Rebecca address. Okay?
A public address.
Now, that's just one example, another example is when you turn right in Irwinville, headed towards Jeff Davis Court. You turn right by the post office, and you get about three hundred dollars down that way, everybody has a fixture address that live in Irwin County. So now, we're gonna get to the point in my story, the point in my story is all them people live. Either got Rebecca address, fixture address, whatever address they got, when they buy something on Amazon. Just gets, just gets the, 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 the tax money. It ain't Irwin County.
It's their zip code, right?
It's their zip code, so how can we change that?
Call off the SCAR.
Well, but, I think there's, is there not software sophisticated enough, cause Ray's the same way, I have Ray's address, and Ray's, Ray's our big, has three candidates.
But, but I, but I've talked, I've talked, I've talked to some people, I've talked to, and this ain't hard to do, but I've talked to some. I've talked to some people that's a little bit smaller now, that ain't hard to find, but they is, they, it's a breakdown, but that, that, I mean. Part of it, majority of it goes to, to, to the zip code. And I mean, you think about how many people in Irwin County.
Yeah, e-commerce.
Yeah, that, that, that buy stuff online, and you look at the money that, that, that we could, that could benefit us if there was some way we could, we could.
I would think that there, there.
I just wonder about software, I heard these companies use that GeoCode.
There was, um.
Zip code, and no, you're there.
Yeah. With Supreme Court, there was a lawsuit that was out of, uh, cause with our little retail, e-commerce. South Dakota, there was some state that, that filed a suit.
Because of.
Cause the same kind of thing.
And even you get up very closer to tips, and you got people living in Irwin County that's got Chure addresses.
But would it, would it be, would you be able to just throw your county into your address in the? When you, when you do it?
If I ever, like, if I ever put in an address and it says Lake County, it'll bring that all through, for me, you know, with Ray, it'll say which.
Yeah, you're right, I remember, yep.
But I, I mean, I.
That's a good po- problem, uh, that's a good thing, what do I need to get?
I mean, something to look into, and that might be something we might need to, like, to get our legislators, you know, in on or something.
But I do wish I would think about, you know, the possibility of additional penny sales tax. If it's.
Crossboard.
And then on the flip side, if you're worried about the five hundred thousand to be borrowed. Uh, if you're worried about the five hundred thousand to be borrowed, and I understand, but, um, in looking at this, do you see where that, that can be cut? That can be cut out of this in order to be able to make up that difference? To be able to pay for it, I mean, you know, I'm looking at this, you know, we have to adjust our budgets at home, and so, send our bills to pay the bill.
That's what I kept asking about, I mean, if the revenue comes in, if the revenue comes in, you know, if it does, then.
Well, I, you know, you know, well, the thing is, we're not far from where the county normally operates, so think about this. So, the county's been operating, we have, we're not really operating above what we normally do this year, so. If you start cutting, that means, uh, I mean, you can do it, you just cut less services, and, uh, I mean, that's part of it, uh. But if you cut too much in the service, you're cutting, you're cutting into the, the welfare of the citizens in line, yes, you, you are. And, and, you know, uh.
Catch twenty-two.
Yeah, so, it, what's happened, the, 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 the ARPA money, the, the ARPA money has certainly camouflage. The budget over the last two years, it's been a blessing, we need to find us more ARPA money.
But, I mean, another little, another little illustration too, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you go ahead, sir.
Uh, another little illustration too, you know, you say we, you know, we're running off of a two thousand seven budget, uh, just for an example, well. What do you think a set of longbow blades cost in two thousand seven, probably set of longbow blades lately?
No, but I can imagine it, don't.
Oh, yeah, they, they doubled from, from, uh, from two thousand fifteen to now.
Correct.
Almost tripled for a set of longbow blades. And the point I'm trying to make is, is, you know, y'all breaking off two thousand seven, eighteen years later, you know, every, everything's going, everything's costing.
Well, that's why we've been putting band-aids, we, the county's done a good job of putting band-aids, but the band-aids, I think how they made it best, the band-aids are gone. They're, they're, we've, we've got as much as you can get out of it, so, we, you know. Yeah.
Well, we need to, uh, do all we can to support. Increased revenue beyond the property taxes.
Yeah, I agree.
You know?
I, well, there's a lot of, we, we had.
People offering revenue, I was just saying, if there are any projects.
We, we go work.
Bring revenue. No, I'm saying, not just grants, but I'm saying revenue.
Yeah.
Beyond property taxes, we need to support that.
We, we got some proj- uh, projects out, uh, that's within the development authority, the smart community that had it, and then, uh. And then the, the, you know, the big, one of the other things we're looking at, and it won't be a big deal to bring in some revenue would be business licenses, county doesn't use that. We got several businesses out in the county, a little, you know, we got, it's a good way.
The thing you're talking about.
You, you get this, you get, you, you know.
Already paper.
I was gonna say, Chris, that's what we pay.
Well, you know, we, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, but, you know, it's just another way to keep up with the businesses operating.
Keep price up and.
That would be a, I mean, all counties. I'll tell you what I didn't realize, uh, Macon, Bill County, they have a, uh, they are watching every, all development. Their, their, uh, tax assessment, they hired these drones, they're, they're got.
Oh, yeah.
Data bases, if you, if you start developing or building on your house, they're out there, they're, I don't know how they keep up, they were talking about that, our tax assessment. But, we're not, I mean, it's just part of business, I mean, we've got to do what we got to do, and it takes, that, me and Willis has looked at it. One thing different about a business and a county government, businesses, you got one stream of money, period, you know where it's coming, it's going straight to you, to your bank. Counties, there's, it's all over the place, you got so many tentacles coming in, a funding, grants, uh, taxation. Just, it's just coming in everywhere, and you're just counting, all these are coming in. You don't have a shortfall, and, and that's the risk of doing county budgets, you could do a, I have a shortfall.
I don't know if we're doing it in Irwin County or not, but Ben Hill County charged me just my camera sitting in my yard.
Really?
Yeah, on my property taxes, my camera, so, they charged on my taxes, my camera sitting in my yard. So I started, I started up retreat going when they can't sleep.
And drones are coming, y'all.
But, but, you know, I, I, I get it, you know, I believe, I believe it shouldn't be, the taxation should be on the burden of the taxpayer, but we got to find a people. Get the rest over.
Yeah, and if they're gonna be asked to pay more. It's, you gotta provide, you, what additional services if I get the cost of this, you know?
I think what, well, I think what's happening is, we have been at a budget, where we act, we just been using ARPA money to do it. So, we come to a realization, we don't have that spare money now, so now we actually have enough for this, but. Uh, hopefully, the new tax assessment will balance the bu- balance the laws in, in budget. Silas says it wouldn't be too bad, but some areas would be, you know, uh, affected, like rural areas, don't get, you know, when you don't sell your house, that's what changes your tax. Assessment, is reselling your home, so where you don't have a lot of resale, then you will see a change. And that's what happened in other counties, they had a jump in their assessment was a lot of home, you know, change of homeowners.
Alright, so this will be advertised in the paper.
Yes, sir.
Right, and how many more years do we have?
Well, we probably have, now, this I'm due to this, Chris, so you just asked me a test question. I would say, this was the, the first meeting, and then the next county commission meeting we have. We could probably just workshop as a, a public and county commission meeting. I think you better run a lot longer than all of us.
Just thinking.
I can see the wheels turning.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking, can you use the commission meeting as a? I think you can.
You, if you have a cause.
If you have a task, you can.
I'd ask it be before.
Ask it be before the commission meeting?
Fifteen.
Yeah. Right, right, that's right.
Professors.
Thanks, you done told me that one time, I forgot, thank you. I thought you were asleep.
She never slept.
Go make some.
I fucked her up, yeah.
I mean, we're saving twenty thousand dollars a month, that should drop by, it should drop the budget by about two hundred and forty thousand, so. That'll go from eight point six to eight point four. If that's the true number that we come back with.
I, I said, a lot of that number that will drop.
Yeah.
It's good to be on the high side, cause you can all, you know, it's always good, cause you rather go, you, you wouldn't wanna under-budget. And then have to go amend this thing, and raise, that's what people.
And then with the changes we making this year, next year should, this should help us out a lot.
I think so.
Yeah. I mean, we say.
And that's what has hurt us in the past, passive budget, and then go back to the minimum, oh, we just go back to amend the budget, we just go back to.
Can't worry, we under. No, we're not worried, we, and actually, we, we hope to have a plan to get rid of some of this debt, that's our goal.
But is, is the county right now current on all of their invoices?
Just playing.
That have come in?
We're good.
So.
Excluding hurricanes related.
Yeah.
Like debris and all that.
Yep, yeah. And I'm working on options for that, and y'all will get that information when I do, I just. You know, we got to get some reimbursement, I don't understand why the whole is on the fifty percent reimbursement, cause we could use that to pay off the cop, you know, the vendors that done the cleanup. But, you know, there had done it, and hopefully this, you know, with the Warnock and Ossoff and Scott, maybe them three question, think, well, put, twist the arm, or maybe. We'll get a check in.
How much finance charges are sitting out there? How much FINX charges are sitting out there simmering on, and are they charging us interest on this?
The female would take that interest if they do. They haven't charged us yet, but I did tell them if they have to do what they got to do, they got to do what they got to do. Uh, I joked, I would say I joked, I did ask one of them, could we get on a payment plan? And, uh, he said, well, you can borrow, listen, I'm talking to you. You know, you got to think, I'll tell you this, guys, we, we stretched this budget, but, but me and Willis, we got on the call with, uh, ACCG, got us some three easy payments. Uh, we called our, our auditors, got them three easy payment plan. Uh, who, who's that? Uh, we had three, I thought.
The fire alarms.
Like, the fire alarms come in and go, he, he sent us these invoices with three easy payments. So we're really trying to stretch Irwin County's dollar. I promise.
That's about, that was two papers, that was long, right?
Do what?
I said, we appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I know, I'm, I'm a big pro of that, we appreciate what Willis has done.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He is gonna be real. Yes, he has. And I thank him for his patience, cause I, I drove nuts the last couple of weeks, cause. So tell me about this budget again, cause I need to make sure I'm confident before I come before the county commissioners and, and, and. Willis has a lot of confidence in what he's given y'all, and he's put a lot, he's invested a lot of time. And we are blessed by having him. Thank y'all. That's one of the best votes y'all made to prove that Willis is gonna work for this county, cause he's been an asset.
Is there a way to know taxes as revenue, like, um, it's a bundle of several things? Right? Is there one, I mean, like?
I mean, I can, I got it, in the system, I have it broken down. On here.
I know you have it combined something.
Cause that is kind of hard to break it down on the weird, you know, so that, I mean.
I've just been curious to see.
Can we look at?
Okay, yeah.
And, and that, that, go ahead.
Well, just to see what, what we are receiving in the property taxes.
You got to know, you got to know.
Well, we have on the screen.
We got it on QuickBooks.
Yeah.
Everything that's on here has already been plugged into the system to get away from us what happened last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing was put in.
Uh-huh.
So all we had was the copy, not, not what they.
All the copies.
Not what they had broken down, so that's all.
Oh, boy.
That's all we don't know what happens as revenue is and all that.
You know how we found the right one, Chris? We had to search through the newspapers, see what's on the papers, cause there's three copies. This is cool. I'm not exaggerating, though, Dave.
Are you serious?
Yeah, we did not know. We, at one time, we thought it was eight point nine, it was really, well, I think that's what they spent, it was very confusing for us. And I'm gonna tell you something, y'all don't know how important this young man has been to me, but had it been for him, I'd be down at Green League down about our town. He has really looked at these numbers and, 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 and all, he's awesome. But I tell you, we, we struggled finding, I think Patricia might testify on this, we did struggle trying to find the budget, right?
I'll say, I'll say Patricia and, uh, Patricia and Willis, they, they might need medication to keep them used straight.
No, I just stay out of the way, Paul, Paul, Paul. Patricia can also testify. I get out, I stay in my lane, don't Patricia. And you're vague too, Patricia. Patricia and Willis, I stay out of the way, I promise you, I'll stay back here and, 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 and take phone calls. But she was already being right, and I'd be just another, another asset.
I just wish I would've listened to the county.
Do what?
I said, I wish I would've listened to the county plans forty years ago.
Well, you know, I can understand this. You know, this thing's right here, is this, that's a little, that's a little misleading. See, I'm used to. Yeah, yeah, I'm used to that, because we had an hour and forty minutes. And, and let me add this. But let me add this too, by the way, so I'm not only leaning on Barney Kelly to do the racks on the other side, I'm also using this at the South River Region, Lindsay. I gotta meet me and, me and Patricia, and Willis has got a call at her four thirty, so that's no charge, we paying the. So they can help us get racks. Correct, so we, we're fully. Do, y'all good?
That's all my question, brother.
Make the most to Aaron. Don Hickey, make the most to Jern, Paul Sack, all of the players. Close, meet the Jern.
Close, just stay here.
Thank y'all for the time, I'm sorry to have to, I thought this was important, this, this, I have this meeting, y'all. Just, y'all up there?